You're good?
You're good.
Special Agenda Design Review Board, August fifteenth, will be called to order at four P M. At nine fifteen, Estorilville Road, City Meeting Room. Uh, meeting, uh, roll call. Peter Gaffers excused. Steven Green is here.
Yep.
Todd Conville.
Here.
Michael McPartman's on his way. Frank Davis here. Josh Sky.
Present.
I don't know why. Ben, you know, listening, but you're here, so.
Here.
Start calling vacant.
Okay, any call of the public? If, um, anyone, is there any, any sign up for call of the public?
Yeah, it's right there. Thank you, Ben.
Sure.
Yeah, Richard Robinson.
Okay.
Call the public, sign it.
Oh, you want to just, before you get to the item?
Call the public is the things that aren't on the agenda.
Oh, no, then that's fine. So you want to speak to one of the items?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's fine. Then we'll move to agenda item number one, discussion possible action. Item, application nine forty-five, dash forty-five, Bisbee Residential Historic District, unencumbered, not contributing property. This application seeks approval to build a new home. Ben, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I'll recuse myself from this end.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay. Hi. So, uh, this application is for a, uh, new home above the most market on, uh, Bury Gulch. Uh, it's up the stairs, there's a vacant lot that you might be familiar with, where there's a car painting and a street tree. So, right up the hill from that, underneath what used to be a greenhouse, that was vacant, um, is a little plot of land that my client, Dan Tosh, um, is, wants to build a, uh, small house on, uh, two bedroom, uh, one bath. Um, and we designed the house to be a board and batten, uh, wood construction, um, very much, uh, inspired by the surrounding miners cabin, so it's, uh, kind of elongated plan, uh, and matches up exactly with the concrete ruin that's on the site. So there's, there's an old, uh, either it's a prison cell or, or dynamite shelter or something that's on the site, so we're lining it up with that and kind of incorporating that as part of the porch. And, um, across the valley is Bill Higgins' house, which is a, another miner shack that we took, um, inspiration from and kind of copied the design and changed the roof plan a little bit. Um, so that's what you see here, um, and it is, uh, we even looked at the setbacks, which isn't always the case in old Bisbee, but we're within the setbacks. And, uh, and we're kind of coming in right off the sidewalk. And, um, so in the plan is a site plan, a floor plan, and, uh, four elevations. So, um, and, uh, window heights are actually drawn on the elevation, that's, that's what we're, uh, hoping to do. Um, hopefully they'll look like that. Um, the roof, it's going to be corrugated metal, and siding is going to be, um, are you bored with, uh, battens, redwood battens? So, uh, the appearance will be more batten, but with a longer lasting life. Um, and the battens will be, uh, irregularly placed, so not sixteen inch on center, twelve on center, or ten on center, but kind of more random, um, as strong here, um, in the elevations. Um, that's it.
Questions?
Uh, did you guys put together a materials list? I've just not seen it.
Well, it's noted, there's not a list, but it's noted on the drawings what the materials are.
Oh, okay. Just need a magnifying glass to see it.
Ben, you're not kind of the elderly, elderly here.
Yeah, so four, four battens, um, listed, uh, page eight three, in the details, east elevation. And there's, uh, overall dimensions as well.
Steven, you come next.
Um, yeah. Ben, I noticed there's, um, optional fireplace drawn on the drawing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is in quite close proximity to other wooden structures to the, what would be the east, I think.
Mm-hmm.
What kind of, uh, control of things like embers coming out of that chimney would that be?
Well, per code, you're supposed to have, uh, a screen on the top of the timber, uh, on the top of the chimney that, uh, controls that, and there's specifications for the closeness of the screen, which control others.
There's a, there's a code requires spark arrest, sir.
I want to add that, that I'm not completely sold on having it burn so easily, because they, you know, if you can get, you know, new fireplaces to burn on liquid fuel, which you don't necessarily have to use wood. So, more than likely, I would go that route.
Okay. That's my only concern here.
Well, I'd say that the building looks well when you keep it in the, uh, the area. Full design.
I like the, I like the board and batten look, that's, uh, one of my favorites. I actually own a house directly on the side of it, that does not look as nice as this one, but, um, I definitely think the design is, uh, a good fit for that neighborhood. Uh, that whole neighborhood is in disrepair, except for Sean in the back back there, he's done an amazing job remodeling his home. Don't mean to put you on the spot, Sean, but, um, uh, I think, uh, I think that, um, that the structure definitely is, uh, will fit in well with, uh, with that area.
Thanks.
Are there any comments from the, uh, tenants about the, about destruction?
Joel, did you have anything to say?
Yeah, I just want to ask, uh, about the windows. Windows and doors, I don't see any.
That's drawn on the elevations. So, what you see is a typical Bisbee window, where you've got a centered one ten, and then, uh, sash windows, so essentially there's four panes per window, two top, two bottom.
All right.
And that, uh, the front door, we've got a, a wood bottom and glass top, and, uh, that's around that nine pane.
Double hung wood sash.
Do you know where you're getting them already, or?
Not yet, uh, and there's one supplier, but, yeah, we haven't got an apartment.
Okay.
And then, it looks like, it's not a nightlight, is it, for the?
I think, I think that is what I drew.
Well, you got a?
Oh, no, it's twelve.
Okay. Good deal.
So, the east elevation is, is looking from that stairwell that you walk up?
Pardon me?
That east elevation's looking from the stairwell that you walk up?
Okay.
So, the, um, that, that's basically the front of the house is approaching it, but from the street, the front of the house would be like the south elevation.
The pickets on the, on the fence, are they going to be two by two? Two by two pickets, what are you guys doing for the pickets?
Um, I was thinking like one by fours with that, with that little design.
Oh, nice.
Or something.
Yeah, that would be really nice.
They'll be more visual from the street.
Yeah.
Because it's pretty high up there.
Uh-huh. Yeah, that's a nice little design there.
And was there, is that a pre-existing lot? Do you know, have you found any, like, sewer lines, or? I know that there's that little building over there.
Yeah, there's utilities along the sidewalk, so it looks like the W P A or somebody built that sidewalk, and along, next to it, I think to the right, so on the east side of the, is the sewer and the water and the gas, and then they like dirt filled over it, and then also, the, the electric line is over that too, so that whole area is like the utility is the.
Do you have a sewer tap?
Um, actually.
There's a sewer tap down below the lower lot.
Yeah, low, in the lower lot, which is actually technically the same lot.
Yes, same lot.
We haven't gotten to construction blocks yet, so.
So.
Well, I'm good, uh, does anyone else want to speak on this?
Anybody from the public want to speak about this? Yes.
Come on up, sir.
Sure, I'll leave the drawers here.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, I'm Richard Robinson, I live at, uh, two thirty-nine, lot two thirty-nine A. I think the two thirty-nine A is a brand new thing, there never was any, not there, but I remember it though. Anyway, I'm sure the, uh, the board is aware that there is no access to this, and there's no stairway, there's no trail, the only thing that's there is the remains of the first attempt to build a road, which was built on my property without any permission, and it was meant for A T Vs, and I have a great gold color picture of A T Vs right outside my backyard, so that is still there, and I'm wondering, does the board have any premonition of what it's going to look like?
I have a question, has the lot been surveyed?
Yes, it has.
It has been surveyed.
The upper lot has been surveyed.
Ben, and you have those, uh, you have those markings up there?
Uh, yeah, and, um, they are up there, it's been surveyed and stamped by our local Bisbee surveyors, so, um, and also there is a pathway as indicated on the site plan directly to the east of the site, so there is access.
Joel, have you been up there?
I have.
Does Mr. Tosh have access from the stairs?
Yes, he does, there's, there's, uh, opening, there would just need to be an opening in the rail which the city would.
So he, so he's not landlocked, he has access to his property?
And we don't, and the city doesn't require access to the, because we've got so many lots that have no access for, for vehicles and that kind of thing, but, um, that's not, that's not a requirement.
Also, it should be noted that Dan owns a lot directly underneath, which does have access, so he can go along to his home lot and.
So it's one big lot, you have a lower lot and an upper lot, I see, and it's all, uh,
It's one parcel.
One parcel, one parcel.
And what, what kind of help, what kind of setbacks do you guys have for the house, for the property line, et cetera, if I could ask you that?
Yeah, I have a thought. So, uh, we actually called, um, zoning and asked, and they said, usually in old Bisbee, you follow what the neighbors are doing, however, we asked what the setbacks are anyways, so, uh, twenty foot rear setback, five foot side setbacks, and fifteen foot front setbacks. It should be noted that it's not really possible to define the front of the lot, since on one side you have the street, and on the other side you have the stairs, so we, we picked the street as a front setback, and, um, as seen in the site plan, we're within all of the setbacks anyways, and no, we don't.
This struc, this structure is not encroaching on any of, uh, the setbacks?
No, and these were drawn from the surveyor's plans.
It's got it, okay.
Which, which are, um, less than a year old, right?
Yes.
And I'd like to. Question would be, is there going to be vehicle access?
No, that, there will be no vehicle access.
On the upper, on the upper lot?
Um, no, you know, even coming from the lower, it's just going to be pedestrian.
But there, but there will be parking on the lower lot?
There's going to be parking on the lower.
But, but there will be no cars up on the upper lot?
No.
Or any type of vehicle?
No.
No A T Vs this time.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, that answers my question.
Awesome.
Yeah. I mean, it would seem, does the board would want to know what access is going to be?
We usually, usually trust our, our local building official.
Todd, uh, actually, I'd like to remind the board that we are just concerned with what this building looks like on the exterior, we do not deal with, with the proximity of other setbacks and things like that, oftentimes it brought up, but that's not in our purview. We just are concerned with designing the building.
That's, uh, planning and zoning, that, that deals with infrastructure and stuff like that, we just want to make sure that the town continues to have a historic feel, so.
Okay, that, that answers my question. Very good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So we're getting up talking there.
I have that one.
Yeah, go ahead. Go to the microphone.
Oh, it's just that the number on that.
Hold on. Talk into the microphone, please.
The number of that building is two thirty-nine, and we have property further down, and it's two thirty-seven, so it seems to kind of be, uh, confusing, that's all.
Again, I think, would that be planning and zoning, or?
Actually, that falls in my purview.
Yep, your pur, so you can take that up with, uh, Mr. Ward, I guess.
I'm Sean DeCramer, I live at, uh, two two one brewery, um, directly below, uh, Dan's property, and I just wanted to say I'm definitely in favor of this, um, I think Todd hit the nail on the head when he said the neighborhood is pretty much in disrepair, um, this is going to be a welcome relief to, just not only my investment, but other people's investments, the investments you guys are making in the neighborhood, so.
Yes, sir.
I just want to give a vote of confidence and let you guys know that I'm in full support.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you for speaking.
Anybody else like to speak to this issue, the same?
Can we all make a motion?
Please, please, make a motion.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to pass, uh, D R B application nineteen dash forty-five as is.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, you have to.
Who, who seconded?
I seconded.
Okay.
Ben, next time, give us something, come on.
The materials?
No, not that, the writing.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry.
You can hand out magnifying glasses up here.
It's basically cheap with the eleven by seventeen.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number two, discussion possible actions, application nineteen dash forty-two, Bisbee Residential Historic District, contributing structure, number two fifty-seven, is existing home location, applicant Mark and Susan Mays. This application is for permission to demolish an existing shed and build a remodel in the location of the rear of the property at four twenty-six guard. Uh, who's?
Uh, I'm going to recuse myself on this one.
Oh, go ahead.
So, there's a, um, shed back behind the house on Garden Avenue, I don't know if you guys are familiar with it or not, um, it's been up forever, kind of looks like crap, um, there really was like that on the property, we want to take that down, um, so that way we can pour a new slab there and build a, like a gazebo type of structure there, um, that we, has more area, you know, to entertain. Uh, it's a big property, but there really is no entertaining space there, and no place to enjoy the outdoors, um, so we want to get permission to take this down. When we rebuild it, it'll be, um, the only thing I'm going to change is the roof's going to pitch in the opposite direction, it's better off the back, um, and that's basically what we're looking at doing, there's pictures here kind of what he wants to do, you'll have a, uh, corrugated roof, all, um, still, I don't know if it's still or it's still or not, still.
And then there's, uh, there's, I think, five more sheds right next to it, so I don't think there's, anyone's going to be missing out on sheds, how many sheds is there?
Two more sheds.
Oh, two more sheds.
Two more sheds in the back, and then.
Two more new sheds.
Brand new garage, it was built by Noah, um, like, three or four years ago.
Okay.
So, and then when we rebuild this, it's going to basically be exactly where it's at, it's, it is on the property line there, as you see in the site plan, um, but we're going to keep it just a little bit further away, so it's going to be like the like, whatever, the walls and the roof will be kept some different direction. And the neighbors, I guess, are good with it going away and being rebuilt new on the same lines, or?
Yeah, I remodeled the house right next door two, um, a couple years back, and, you know, those people were, they were very nice at the time, and I'm sure that they, you know, they're not here, so.
Question, yes, Ben, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one question. Um, so the side facing the neighbor is the eight foot side?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's open, or?
Right now, there's a concrete wall behind it, that's about, um.
About four feet.
Yeah, about four feet tall, and I'd like to leave it there, it just looks old and rustic, and it's, it's not in bad shape, so it'll be, you know, that, and then, like, underneath that, that's where, like, I put my grill and stuff back up against.
But all, all four sides are?
Open, open, yeah, so really it's like, if you can imagine the shed, just with the roof pitched the other way without the walls.
Yeah, basically turning the shed into a gazebo.
So the shed's just not structurally sound enough, because it's been, you know, it's old and it's been burned, and, so I'm going to do something with, uh, metal, because our other sheds have that brown paint that looks like rusted metal, so I thought that either, either paint it brown or let it rust brown, to tie in with the, uh, existing sheds that are in the back.
And then the, the corrugated metal will probably also be that same product, if it's knocked out nice, it'll also rust in the trunk.
Other questions or comments from board? Uh, if you maintain a motion?
Uh, a motion to accept nineteen forty-two, that changes.
I second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed.
Once we get on the agenda.
Well, that's the, uh, only applicants we have on the agenda, we do have, uh, for item number three, discussion and review of administrative approval, and, uh, also I want to add a couple things for our next meeting, can we get there? Um, Michael, do you want to lead off on that, discussion review of administrative approval?
Yeah, sure. So this is a reminder for, as commission members, uh, six hundred Tombstone was an application that came before some time ago, uh, we had approved the building being remodeled modestly, windows changed, makes I think of wood windows, along with some of vinyl windows as well.
Six hundred Tombstone.
The corner of Warren Hill and Tombstone, smoky corner building.
Golden's old house.
Got you.
For those who've been here a while.
Long time.
Um, so that came before us, they had proposed, I think Mr. Ray, they represented the owners, had proposed that, uh, the building be with its remodeling, be re-sided with the original wood siding, that's on the structure, and just as a reminder, this is a contributing structure, and that's what it's rated, uh, who Shipbo on record with them. So, the work's gone in a sort of stop and start basis, so it's been a long time since we've seen this building as an application, uh, but more recently, uh, the, I guess either the applicant or the contractor came back and requested an administrative review for changing how the siding would be done, so what was going, what was originally the original wood siding with the profile, that's a fairly thick siding, I would say, relative to the age of the building, um, was changed to, uh, request to get, to re-side the front, which faces Tombstone, and the back, which faces the back of the lot, that's not particularly visible, with hardy board. Um, I had inquired when Mr. Ward had indicated he'd made that approval, if that really was consistent with D R B guidelines, he said he thought it was, I didn't think it was, I don't know if any other commission members may have asked him or inquired about it, um, but I did follow up with, uh, Shipbo, with Eric Bondi, and he made it pretty clear that the building would only have contributing status with that siding going up on it. So, for me, this is a real concern, because this means a building that is contributing will no longer be contributing, and I'm really not comfortable with the way administrative approval was used, because this is something that came before us as a full board originally, based on trying to maintain some integrity to the building, in terms of its materials, uh, and then it feels like a back door was used to get another type of material to be used in the building, with us finding that after the fact, and again, I'm just not happy that never seen a building this long.
How much of the siding's up?
Um, well, when I initially contacted Mr. Ward, none of the siding was up, now maybe a third of it's up, on the front of the building.
From today, the front, doesn't have siding, you can see there's a pair of the old siding to the sides.
So, so if, uh, concrete siding is used on the contributing structure, it will be deemed a contributing?
I think the issue is that.
Even if it.
This is totally different than the siding that's on the sides of the building, that was on the building originally, it's a clavicle, hardy board, and it's got some kind of a dropped, uh, pine, like, with a design on the sides, and I think that's what we as board thought originally, he was going to reuse that siding.
Yeah.
So, I, you know, I have a question about this, I think that should have been brought before us, rather than administrative approval, uh, because the sides, that's a different thing, but that's, that's totally different, and now.
Kind of distracting to.
And now, and now we're finding that it won't, it'll be taken off the contributing.
Yeah, see, when I drove by it, you know, I knew that the situation was going on, and I just drove by it, I didn't get out to look at it, uh, you know, I probably should have, but I thought it, that it looked pretty much the same, so I was like, well, you know, whatever, it's a different product, as soon as it all gets painted, it should look the same, but you're saying that the profile of the.
Completely different.
Pre-existing is, when you actually come up to it and look at it.
Yeah, it looks odd, you know, that you've got that one wood siding with a different profile than you have.
And you can see it on, you can see it on street view, John.
Huh?
You know, Google Maps, street view?
Oh, okay, well, I mean, now I'm going to stop by there on my way and look at it.
But you can't see the, you can't see what was on there before, if you drive by, but in street view, you can see what was on there.
Isn't the same material that's on the side of the building, wasn't that on the front of the building as well? The siding that was on, that's on the side.
You really can't see on street view, I said, I was talking to Dr. Path.
These have bushes, there's big edges.
An answer to your question.
There's too much bushes on the street.
Yes, you can see the original siding on the side of the building, and some of, some repair work was done on the side when different windows were put in, and they have used some of the existing siding that they had taken off from the back.
And pieced it in.
And pieced it in on the side, so.
You can see that.
Because it hasn't been painted yet, you can see the repair work that was done with, you know, some attention to detail, where they re-add, reused the existing siding, as they told us they would.
Uh-huh.
Put it up on the side of the building, where they'd done some repair work because of changing that windows, so, you know, what we'll have is kind of like a Frankenstein monster of a building on its two sides with original siding, whether it was reapplied or was left there, and then the front and the back, with the front highly visible, the Tombstone and Warren Hill, with hardy board siding.
And the, the, the original siding, was it like a, a one by eight lap siding, or?
It's something like that, but it has a redesigned.
Ship, ship lap, right?
It's, it looks like some kind of a ship lap, maybe a tanning room, that.
They coat, yeah.
It has a coat, I mean, it could be reproduced, uh, take a little bit of work, but.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of, of siding on the front of that building.
No, I, you could get a ship lap, and then run it through a router, or they coat it.
You could reproduce that, pretty, pretty close. So I think it brings up the question of what, again, what's going to be administratively approved, and what isn't, uh, this type of thing I wouldn't think would have been administratively approved, can you give us some thoughts on that, Joe?
Yeah, they, did you, do you have a copy of the administrative approval?
I don't.
Oh. But, um, I think, if I remember correctly, that it, the administrative approval was for like for like.
Was what?
Like for like.
Like for like.
I don't, I don't, can't give administrative approvals for anything that's not like for like.
Well then.
So, but that was, I believe what was on the approval, and that's why it was like, well, why, why, it was going on to an agenda, if I remember right, the second one, and it's like, well, it says like for like, so, so I went ahead and did it, but.
But it isn't like for like, it's different siding.
Yes, but you had a problem with the approval, Frank, and what I'm talking about is that the approval was like for like, that's what I said.
So he approved like for like, but it sounds like he just went and did something.
So, Johnny Rayby did something different, so you didn't approve.
I didn't approve him to change anything, if, if it said like for like, that's, that's when you get an administrative.
You didn't approve the cement, the cement hardiebacker siding, you approved like for like.
If it was, well, if, if it'd been lap siding, and you're replacing lap siding with, with hardiebacker, we've always, we've always called that like for like.
And I gotta, you know, I gotta be, uh, I like the, uh, the, being able to do some administrative approval situations is a good thing, but.
Well, not if we're removing contributing structures from the historical.
I agree.
And what I'm understanding is that you did not approve what Johnny Rayby has done there with that side, you said like for like, and that is not like for like.
That's, that's the way I remember it, Frank, and that's, I don't have it in front of me, and it's not here.
That is not like-for-like siding.
It's not like-for-like.
So are you going to go stop work on?
That's what I'll have to do, yeah.
And then would we have, would we have to revisit that application that come in front of us?
Well, no, he's going to have to do what he said he was going to do and do it like-for-like.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
But why don't we, while we're talking about this, it's, it's a broad subject. Why don't we deal with that, with the issue of what you guys are going to want like, what you guys are calling like-for-like? Because I thought it was being, you know, that somebody was saying, oh, he's putting on cement siding instead of putting on wood siding. And, um, that's always been something that's done on a like-for-like basis.
Sure.
So if that's going to be an issue, I want you guys to tell me that.
Certainly, and I think that brings up another thing. We're about to go, go into, at the next meeting, want to discuss bringing the committee together for the review, design review guidelines. And that's, that's something I believe we'll definitely want to be looking at. I, I mean, in my mind, if a siding is similar to what is on there, then that's okay. That may be different with other members of the board, but we do need to define that, you're right, Joe.
I, I, I would first look at what the current Shipoh rules are and what would constitute a loss, right, of status. It might be the case that we were not, we've not, shouldn't have been allowed to replace wood and the hardy board, even if when you look at it after it's painted, it looks exactly the same. The fact that it's hardy board versus, that might be against Shipoh rules. I don't know.
We need to, yeah, we need to look.
Well, I think the main thing would be is that we're not losing, if, if you're going to do an administrative approval and you're going to lose a contributing structure, obviously, that's something that we wouldn't appreciate. So that would be a no on that.
I mean, I think we had to get Mr. Bondi back and he loves to come.
And I think...
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Bondi about this.
Why, I know you did.
And he also indicated that he'd be glad to come and present to us in October if our agenda permits. He knows the day and time. So if that can be reserved for our October meeting. But I think my, my other concern, Mr. Ward, is that, I know I brought this to your attention immediately because I live just a block from the building. And you simply said, oh, it's like-for-like, that's why I approved it, end of story. And to me, that was not a complete response. I indicated what my concern was. I indicated that the siding is clearly different. And that's why I then followed up with Mr. Bondi because I thought, okay, maybe I don't understand the Shipoh guidelines. But it's clear I did. And it's clear that his guidance was, you do that, the building's not a contributing structure. So I would appreciate some other kind of follow-up from you or someone else within the city administration to either confirm with Shipoh what those standards are. Because to me, this situation could have been avoided from what's now being discussed as a stop work potential situation. And given the particular contractor who you've brought concerns to us before about, and me in particular, it only underscored to me the reason to actually follow up on this and address it with the contractor and or the owners of the building. So I feel like we lost an opportunity because notice was given to you after that like-for-like, even if that was done in a deceptive manner by the applicant or their contractor. Or like-for-like was misunderstood. There's an opportunity to resolve this before a piece of hardy board everyone on the building, and we lost that opportunity.
Yeah. I have a right to be able to take a vacation sometime, Mike. And so, so I was, I came about two days before I left and I was wall-to-wall with stuff. I worked on, you know when you guys got your stuff. I sent that stuff out on midnight. And I had a plane to catch you the next morning. And I came back and I worked for another hour and a half, or two hours, two and a half hours in the morning. Now, that's not your fault. That's not your problem, but I'm saying that I was back to the wall with stuff to take care of. And, um, that got, that got neglected, but it wasn't because I didn't care enough. But I just don't have enough time to do everything that needs to be done sometimes, Mike. Sorry.
And I, I hear you. I worked in public service for twenty years. I'm familiar with having to work long hours with that regard from the customers I'm serving. Then I would certainly hope you'll continue to bring that to your supervisor or others. Because I think we need to pursue this in a more organizational way as well. Because what I'm hearing is you're overwhelmed with demand. You're not able to respond in a timely way to situations that the times will require a timely response. But for our role as volunteer residents in the community, we're left with, well, that's not a solution to situations like this. So as a member of this commission and as a resident of this community, I want to see us pursue something that's a systemic resolution to this. Whether that's changing the administrative approval process, whether it's pressing the mayor or council or administrators that Mr. Ward reports to to get the appropriate support there. Because I don't see how this situation wouldn't occur again, given the dynamics of your workload.
I, I, I do wonder what, um, it, it takes time, like, so I imagine Joe worked those laps around the city, right? So each lap takes, I don't know, a week or a few days, right? When, from when you're in one neighborhood, you go to the next, right? And that'll change by neighborhood, by season, by economy, right? So in that time period from, okay, he was here this week, he's going to come around again. Contractor can do a lot of work that conflicts with the contractor's own permissions that were given. In this case, like-for-like was not, the contractor was the one breaking the rules. So it just, I guess it depends on like what, how long it takes for the project to be checked up on. Right? Is, is maybe the issue, I don't think the issue is the administrative review. I think it's the follow-up with the deceptive contractor. And how that gets a stop order or a fine or, you know, remove that and do that before you get a stop order sort of thing, depending on what their track record is. That's how I see it. I'm not debating, I agree with you totally. And that's just how I see how long it takes for him to even catch the issue. And then it comes down to what happens. Maybe a stop order is needed if he agrees to take off the siding and actually do the ship lap like he said he would.
Well, right. And that would be the goal.
And I think in this case, you might have seen it before Joe had a chance, because you live right next to it, before Joe had a chance to say himself.
But the stop work order is a way to make this particular contract, contractor accountable.
At this point.
So there, so there is a way to rewind what's happened. And I'm sure Joel, that's within his scope and he's going to follow up on that. So...
I'm, I'm not questioning there's a remedy at this point. It's obviously not the most time-efficient remedy. I don't have great feeling for the contractor that engaged in this practice based on concerns that have come up before this commission previously, specifically about this contractor. And that you, Mr. Ward, have raised as well, that has prompted us to make changes in some of the existing design review board guidelines that we operate from. So I hear all that. I still, at the end of the day, go, okay, so if the workload of one employee with the city of Bisbee is that impacted and certainly given the amount of, of volume of remodeling and new building activity we see going on throughout just old Bisbee, forget the other parts of Bisbee that Mr. Ward's responsible for, then that situation's just going to occur again and again unless there's a different solution that the city of Bisbee, the council, or with, we can come up with. I know at one point, there was an attempt to tap into Cochise County's code enforcement arm as one way to try to lessen some of the workload. At this point, my understanding is that has that relationship been severed entirely? Do we know?
Yeah.
Not entirely, but, not entirely, Michael, but they, um, they right off the bat when we started, they, they said, oh, we don't, we don't want to do that, the code enforcement. And go look around Cochise County and see if you really want them to do your code enforcement.
Well, I would just say, I would just, I hear your concern. I would just say that, you know, this building is kind of like that old Zen phrase, bad at the beginning, bad at the middle, bad at the end. At the beginning of this building, an asbestos roof was, removal was begun by the contractor who did not have the licensing to remove asbestos from a building. The county code enforcement department was called and I believe within an hour or two, they were there, they stopped the work, and they required a licensed contractor who's licensed to remove asbestos to remove the asbestos. So at least in that one particular instance, they were prompted. I know the politics of this has changed, now that the city of Bisbee's not generating revenue for Cochise County by renting out expensive office space. So maybe the county's less inspired to want to be responsive than they once were. But I think the city of Bisbee, as well as we as community representatives, are going to have to be creative in coming up with some other solution.
I know, I know it's hard to, it's, it's hard to, it's because you've got code enforcement and you've, and you've got building inspector together. But what they did, those are building inspectors that came out there and that was a building inspector, not code enforcement. Code enforcement is, has to do with your cutting your grass in a timely manner and most of those kind of things.
I think that this issue has been ongoing, I know it's been ongoing for, you know, years, you know. Back when Bob Meskett was, was, you know, the code officer. And, you know, it's finding, I think if perhaps we as a board can write a letter to the council and, you know, tell them that, you know, we see that Mr. Ward needs some help, you know, I don't know, we can push any, that's all we can do. Because they're going to say, we've only got so much money and Joe's going to have to deal with what they have, so...
But didn't they say that he took a vacation and that's what, I mean, it was a week out of, what, how many vacations a year do you take?
I had, I had two hundred and twenty hours built up. That's how many vacations I get.
But I'm saying that what are we, we're going to ask that they put some fill-ins for when he goes on vacation? Is that what you're talking about? Because I know Joel has great work ethic. He shows up like...
No, we're talking about something that needs to be more systemic, either if it's additional staffing to support Mr. Ward to be able to respond to these issues that are timely, so they can get a timely response. My concern is because the issue's been going on for years, it's been battered around. I know to your frustration, to frustration of the members of this commission, to some community members' frustration as well. So what I don't want to see after three and a half years of serving on this, where this has come up before, we reach an impasse and it's basically past the bug time, that we just quietly wilt away as other buildings continue to fall away as contributing structures in historic history.
May I ask what you would like to see?
I think a more robust discussion certainly needs to happen. I just wanted to raise this to get the discussion started. But I think we're going to need to engage different people within the city of Bisbee to have the discussion. I think having Eric Bondi come to present to us in October.
Is there anyone else that has some ideas on what they'd like to see happen?
I don't think this is a quick fix.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, maybe someone else has some ideas.
Much of it is a budgetary action guide.
Frank had, had the best idea, or I don't like to say the best idea, like, let's take it to council and...
I think that's where we could start.
There's, there's a lot of people who feel so, feel, have a lot of emotion for our district, and that's rightly so.
But wait, what do we?
There's also, there's also a lot of volunteer forms that are available for, that, we have a lot of people in the community who have a tremendous amount of love for the, for the district. If they, if they'd like to take on a little bit of that enforcement, and I'm not talking to you, Michael, you're a volunteer here. Don't mistake what I'm saying at all.
I know.
But the, um, you know, we have, we do have people out here that, that want to help the district, I know. A little bit of volunteer could go a long ways.
That's part of the discussion that we need to have, what, what type of slots volunteers could assist you with and assist this board in doing these things. So I think at this point, let's move, move on to the, what were you going to say?
Well, I mean, if we're going to get it to council with somebody, should we make a motion or, or, or something to, for somebody to write a letter?
I'm confused about what exactly we would be bringing to town, like, because...
Process, John. Process.
We're not nailing anything yet.
Is that what, that we're going to get Joel a helper? Is that really? That will change, we'll change process.
Yeah, we'd like to see some, some decisions.
We did talk about, um, before about fees. Now Joe has permission to hand out fees for contractors that don't follow through with what they promised. And I don't know if that's been, if you've actually handed out any fees yet, but that could straighten some...
Fees are fines.
Fines.
Sorry. Didn't that get killed by the city manager when you brought it up? We discussed all that.
Yeah, we went out there and talked with the judge and the judge, the judge felt like, um, that the, well, in one way, it's ambiguous because we have two different sets of wording that are within the zoning code, which would, is the code that is over this, the DRB rules. And so because we've got two different sets of rules, he didn't think that it was, that was going to be...
It could be enforceable?
Enforceable.
Right. They get it that...
So that's, so that's a...
So that's another thing that we need to, to talk about. And this can all come kind of under the umbrella of our, the review of the guidelines.
We're going to have to.
I mean, we, that's going to be a big project.
So getting that wording straightened out so that he can't have a fine for a review of that.
But I mean...
One of the things, so let's, let's bring this forward again next, at the next meeting.
Okay.
And we want to, at the next meeting, I want to add to the agenda of reviewing, setting up the guidelines committee. So think about who wants to be on that. I know you would Ben and would love to have you. Also, I'd like to, along with this, I'd like to see the chairman review the packets before they go out to the, go on to the agenda, just to, and I think that, just as an assist to you, Joe, I've been wanting to do this for a while, just to make sure, because when we get incomplete packets, we have to turn down the applicants. And we want to make sure, I think we all are frustrated with incomplete packets and...
Boy, I read his thrills.
Not having...
No more double-sided.
And so, so that's what we need to talk about, how we want to see them. And I'll review them and anybody else can review them on board that wants to do it before they go on the agenda. So...
Usually as I get, as I get the agenda, the, um, the packets, they, they're sent out to you guys on those days. And if you guys find any mistakes, I've said that before too.
Well, it's hard to do that, you know, for the emails, you know, you get, you send out the emails and it's like, there's a piece here and a piece there. I think if we can get them in, they're supposed to be in two weeks before they go on the agenda, correct?
Well, technically, yeah, but I, I accept them right up to a week before.
Well, that may not be prudent to do because they come in, they're a mess. And it doesn't, you know, if they can't get into the timely manner, then...
Well, some are and some aren't.
We can't put, well, that's what we want to straighten out, I think. But let's discuss that at the next, at the next meeting. So those, those items are going to come up. Anything else?
Yeah, and that's a simple one, you say, read the list of things. So you called out, where's my material list? I should have a material list, right?
Right, right. Technically, it's listed right...
We got to check each other and...
It's listed in the book, you know, what's going to be in the package. And it's there. So we need to tighten that up. Yeah, we'd like to help with that, so... Anything further?
I just want to clarify, in terms of Six Hundred Tombstone, if I heard correctly, a stop work order is going to be issued on that project because the siding is not like-for-like?
Yeah, I'll, I'll look at the, his, his agenda, or his application, but remember, that was the one we had, we had like, I'm trying to think, nine packets. And as I was fixing them, doing them, it's like, oh, that one doesn't need to go. But the...
The second time around. Because it was the first application where the major work was approved with a like-for-like siding.
So I, I looked at the house today and it appears that the front siding is off completely, right?
Yes. It's been off for some time because they, we approved them, modified part of the front. But their, their, part of the rationale was we're going to reuse all of that siding from the front to the back.
Right, no.
And should have sufficient amount to be able to re-side the entire structure.
Yeah, never will. And so, but they put a hardy board. Did they remove the hardy board?
No, about a third, about a third of the hardy board's gone up on the front.
It's down low.
But Joel will have a little, like, we got to let Joel do his job.
Yeah, I'm sure he will. If there's nothing else to come before the board, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Motion to adjourn?
Second motion to adjourn.
Aye. Aye.
I need to, I got a little something for, uh...
Two weeks to put in there for like serious, I have a lot of packages.
Frank, we're all retired.
That's going to be, you know...
I mean, that's what, since it's the...
Fourteen seventy-seven hours to see every type of package in. You got to really be pretty polite.
Well, that's what we're talking about.
When did she, when she start?
She started, um, she started in twenty-six.
Well, she's, well, that's the month. A little bit. That's what I was going to do. I was going to give her a month and I was going to go get her shit. I don't know what her, how busy she is or anything like that, but...
Honestly, the worst, the worst thing you could do is to get a...
I think at night.
Oh, yeah. Their fathers are all, well, not so much to inform, but they should be a little assless. And, you know, going down. Down there that we live. And he doesn't, I like Paul, he's a good guy, he doesn't know jack shit, he's the boss.
And it's a study that gives me, they, they promise me at some point, I don't want to work for them. I think they know that, so.
Yeah.
But they, but, and so they see.
People, so we do have a question about it.
Yeah, but he's, he's annoying. He came down there, he didn't really, nobody was following.
He's blind, he's.
He had to look and see what team had red line in my plan.
Whatever's on, what did I think on it now?
I've been told by workman, what should I know? Oh, you might have to, you can't have it so much. Such a size.
No, I don't think so, I don't think so.
Another question I had was, where are.